Good evening. We call for the order of the regular commission meeting of February 19th, 14th. My mouth is just not working tonight, guys. I'll just tell you right off the bat. Can we please rise for a moment of silence in the pledge of allegiance that was led by Emily Spence, fourth grade, Atlantic West Elementary. I'll let you know. Good evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Athlete of the month, the commissioner is honored, please.
Good evening. Each month the city commission, we honor our athlete of the month, and this week's winner's Aiden Comey. Come on up, Aiden. What do you got with you? You want to come up? You got someone to come up? Yes, I am. Okay, Aiden Comey. Aiden is an enthusiastic player. He is always smiling and is a leader on the field. Aiden demonstrated this leadership most recently when a new player was added to his team. He immediately took the initiative to help this player during practice. Aiden has a caring personality and a passion for baseball. He is also a great ballplayer, most recently pitching four shutout innings during a single game. Very good. Margate Pony Elite Baseball is proud to nominate Aiden as their athlete of the month. Congratulations. We have, first, we have a gift bag from the City of Margate from Public Works. Inside the gift bag, we have the history of water book from these. We have Margate recycled Post-it from these. We have the pencils and the bookmark from these. I like these, very nice. The water bottles also from these. From the City of Margate, the commission, we have a pen, a fifth year anniversary keychain, two blue and two white Margate City pencils from the city commission, also a luggage tag from the city commission if you plan on traveling, a police department badge, two tickets to Calypso Co., the water park, and as for parks and recreation, a reflector from the Margate CRA, and also a flashlight, and an energizer on the go from the IT department, and also a sports package from Pat Gugan, who is donated from your sports shots. And what that is, is a sports photographer will come out to your next game or whatever you guys want, have your mom call him up, he'll come out and take some photographs, and you've got a 112 by eight poster, a 18 by 10, two 5 by 7s, and eight ball-sized photos, courtesy of your sports shots. Thanks, Pat. On behalf of the Margate Commission, Aiden Comey, athlete of the month for your outstanding efforts in Margate Pony Elite Baseball. Signed by Mayor Lisa Pierman, Vice Mayor Joanne Simone, Commissioners Brian Donahue, Tommy Rosano, and Frank Talarico. Congratulations, Aiden.
I want to go on the pin for Margate's. Commissioner Rosano wants to know where you can get a Red Sox athlete. He's a big Red Sox.
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations. Can the rest of the commission come down, please? Where's Sam? Sam? Come on up. When you put in 20 years with the city, the whole commission has to get up and come down here because that is an incredible achievement and we definitely appreciate it. Both of our people tonight, one's 15, one's 20, we have five more years before we get the rest of them. But both of them are from one of my favorite departments. They don't wear the uniforms, they don't drive the fire trucks, but they are as essential to this city as any other department, and that is our public works. So, for 20 years of service, can we have Mark Weinrock, please?
As Mayor Pierman said, Mark has been with us for 20 years. Mark's type of aquatic weed applicator, one that does not describe Mark's function at all. Mark is, I would say, canal master. So, Mark knows anything and everything about canals. He's currently the president of the South Florida Aquatic Plant Management Society. Mark is one of the leading experts in the field in all of South Florida for canals and canal maintenance and aquatic plant management. So, Mark, thank you for your expertise for the city. Thank you for being with us for 20 years. I hope you have many more. I know you hope you have less than many more, so, but thank you very much.
Listen, Adam Paddy, this is one of the guys that keeps the canals as clean as they are. On behalf of the City of Margate, certificate of recognition, Mark Weinrock, Margate Public Works Department for 20 years of service as a city employee, signed by, can you believe this, Mayor Lisa Pierman, Vice Mayor Joanne Simone, Commissioner Brian Donahue, Tommy Rosano, Commissioner, and Frank B. Talarico, Commissioner. Congratulations, and another 20 more.
Now, at being 63 years old, this won't be the last plaque I receive. Fear not. And Sam, to you and your two predecessors and City Manager Blau and the two who preceded you, I want to thank all of you for allowing me to do my job and to do it to, so to speak, my saviors. And again, it's not so much the money, but it's the pride that I take in looking out and seeing the canals as they are. And the pride I have is the pride the City of Margate should have too because in the tri-county area, you probably have the best canals around. So, thank you very much.
Yes, Mark and I go way back. We used to camp together up at River Ranch, and he's been around a long time. He's also active in the community. He's an help. He's done a lot of good for the youth in our city, so we always thank you for that. It's nice that our employees get involved, not only within our city, but within the community events. We appreciate it. Congratulations.
And he's also a Margate resident, so, is that bonus for me there? Put him up. Put him up. Are we unbalanced? Do I have to, for some reason, my boys have to be over there? I love size. And again, you've got to wait five years to make them all get down up there. Hopefully, we'll have some of them still up there. I can't control who's up there. For 15 years of service, and I just started working with Steve, and I really like him. He's a great guy. Steve McCullough.
Steve? Steve's been with the city for 15 years. He's been with Public Works the whole time. He started out as laborer, moved to laborer one, now a service worker, service worker one, and then to painter. Steve Forte has been painting the whole time he's been here. He actually has an official title of painter right now. Anything that you see in this city hall, anything that you see around the city, it's a public building. Steve has painted it. Pretty much every single thing here, Steve has painted. So, all the beautiful colors that you see around the city, thank you, Steve, for the beautiful colors. Steve is now performing the duties of the municipal complex superintendent, so Steve is in charge of the maintenance and upkeep of the city hall complex as well as the senior center over there. So, Steve, thanks a lot. Thanks for all your hard work. We do hope to see you for at least another 15 years, possibly 20 years, and on from there. So, thanks a lot.
Yeah, between Steve and Melissa, this is the only way things get hung up in my office because I don't do a great job of it. Stephen, on behalf of the City of Margate, Margate Public Works Department, for 15 years of service as a city employee, signed by the Mayor Lisa Pierman, Vice Mayor Joanne Simone, Commissioner Brian Donahue, Commissioner Tommy Rosano, and Commissioner Frank Talarico. And we do expect another 15 years out of you. Congratulations. Commissioner Comets, Commissioner Talarico.
Just want to welcome someone here, Father Joseph Conzo from St. Vincent's. Welcome. Nothing else. Glad to see everybody here.
Commissioner Donahue. So, did you check out the new look of the city website yet? Yes, excellent, right? And so, we learned to navigate it and have fun going, okay, quick, that's who would happen. So, that's the fun part. And it's margatefl.com. If you haven't done it yet, do so as soon as you can. And one of the things that I like is as you go there, it starts showing you what's going on in the city. For instance, let me see, the admission is free for this event, March 1st, our movies will start, and we'll be showing Monster View. Now, I paid big money to see that. So, did I say free? So, go on out to the sports complex on March 1st at 7:00 PM, and it's free, and it's a wonderful way for our community to get together, and I hope to see you there. Commissioner Rosano.
Good evening. Just getting on what you said, I just went over to the movies this weekend with my kids. See Legos in 3D. By the time I walked in, it was $68, so.
Thank you, man.
It'd be a free movie. Yeah, I was going to say, just going to say a quick 99th birthday to Mrs. Spina, a long time Margate resident here in Margate. She's turning 99 this weekend. Wish her the best and God bless, and that's about it.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes, I'm excited about to see Monster View. So, I definitely will be there. We have our spring cleanup and garage sale on March 15th from 7:00 to 12:00. You can sign up until March 13th. And I would also like to thank Rip from the Chamber of Commerce for the great job you are doing in organizing the businesses to come to talk to the chamber about possibly changing the sign code. The conversation has been excellent. It's very heartfelt, and lots of good constructive criticism is coming out of the businesses. So, thank you for doing that. I look forward to working with the businesses and working with my fellow colleagues when we all meet together, and hopefully, we will come up with some changes that will be a benefit to our residents. So, thank you for organizing those for us. And during Christmas time, we saw the beautiful lights on Margate Boulevard. I don't know if you've noticed the white lights in the trees that are still there. They look really, really nice. So, our city looks good with those white lights. So, thank you for doing that. Who was responsible?
Technically, it's you all, the CRA. We're keeping them up until, I think, March next month? Yes, so March 1st.
I know a lot of residents have commented about them this past weekend at the Sounds of Sundown, so they look really nice, and that's all.
Okay. Can't we keep them a little longer than March 1st? They really do make the street look really great.
We could look into that.
And tons of people this weekend at Sounds of Sundown were just raving about how nice those trees look, so, I don't know, maybe something might want to add to our CRA. We'll talk to the CRA. When we have a CRA meeting, we'll talk about that. Yes, I have nothing. Y'all covered everything for me. Thank you, saved me time. City Attorney, anything?
No.
Justice, anything? Okay, public discussion.
Okay, if I take this box out of the way? Rich Alleyenella, resident of Margate. Good evening, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. I have something that's on my mind. I just want to address it to the commission. I live in Rural Springs North, and it's a beautiful neighborhood in Margate. However, we're doing some roof repair. People are replacing their roofs, and somehow or another, we're getting shingle roofs put in there. Can anybody tell me why that we're matching no decor with this, we're using shingle roofs to be installed? There's probably about four of them in that neighborhood right now, and I'm just calling this to your attention because this takes down the neighborhood big time for this to happen. It should be tiled like everybody else to match what's going on. You all look surprised up there, but they are there. There's about four homes that are, you know, done with the regular shingle roof, and this doesn't match. It's taken away our value of our homes in that neighborhood because that's a really nice neighborhood in the City of Margate. I'd appreciate it if somebody can address it tonight or tell me what's going on with that when they do apply for their permits, when a builder was in there or roofing organization. Do they get permission to put that in? If they do, we should cut that out right now. Please, let's not keep doing that. That's going to ruin that neighborhood. Thanks.
Rich, I believe that you guys are a homeowners association over there? You're not a homeowner? I thought you were a homeowners association even though you don't have a homeowners group.
No.
I don't think you can't put shingle roofs in the city, but we'll ask the city manager.
I think that's, let me defer to the building official. I'll have him call you tomorrow morning, and he'll explain the situation to you and explain the code.
Appreciate it.
Okay. I think they are permissible, but I will let him speak.
I know when you bring in builders, they have to build the same thing, you know, same storefronts or whatever you do to keep it all, you know, looking nice.
Let me have Mr. Kotler give you a call tomorrow, and he can explain this.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Talarico.
Yes, Rich, I, we have similar situation in my neighborhood where they replace the roofs. They, some people put shingles in. Perfectly allowed because we don't have a performance association, we don't have any, you know, covenants, restrictions, and so on. If you had those in place, then you would have something to stand on, but from what I understand, even in my neighborhood, there's not much you can do about it, as long as they pass code.
Commissioner Rosano. If I'm not mistaken, I think Coral Springs is one of the cities where they don't allow shingles. I think that's one of the cities, but Margate does allow shingles, and I don't think it's a problem unless it's through a homeowners association, I'm stating.
I'm at 706 Northwest 8 King Street, Coral Springs 3. I want to first thank the commissioners. I want to thank the four commissioners that showed up at our offices installation this past week. I want you to all know that was duly appreciated and really, really appreciated the fact that you all took time out of your busy schedules to come there to conduct our offices. So, I don't have to make you the point to come here, but again, thank you for the association. I also, over the weekend, I think it was this last weekend, I went to this event that they had all the, there were trucks and food and stuff, and, you know, I'm getting on in years and all, you know, 55 and over. I didn't realize that you guys had that many kids in this town. I was really, really impressed. I saw the families coming there and, oh, and we just genuinely, genuinely were having a great time. So, I think it comes through the, whatever, the CRA or whatever, whoever, but I really, it was like culture shock for me, being an old person, to realize that we have children, we have school-aged children in this town, and I think that's the, I was very impressed, and hopefully, we'll have a good, I know you have a good relationship with the schools because I know we feel the same way, so I wanted to mention that as well. And just, I know you're planning or whatever, you know, redevelopment in downtown Margate and all that. The one thing, I'm not a money person, I'm not big into it, I can hear that, but I personally would like to see in that flea market area, possibly a multiplex. I'm thinking about a movie complex, you know, it looks like there's nothing too close. You've got something on Riverside and Coral Springs, but basically, there's nothing around here, and maybe that would be something that you might want to think of in terms of development over there. But again, I really wanted to come get a, thank you all for being there.
Mr. Grant, last night, I was, I was supposed to announce that Commissioner Donahue had to work, and I had forgotten to, so would you let?
Why? No, no, no.
No, I'm just going to fix what I didn't do last night. Would you, would you let your president know that he was working last night? Also, Coconut Creek is getting a huge movie theater over at the Promenade area.
Oh, they are?
Yeah. I know.
All right.
It's the way it goes with us.
I'll keep looking, right? Thank you again.
Rick Riccardi, 48, 29, South Timming with Circle, President of the Chamber of Commerce. Before you do that, as also founder of Pelletship Living Facility, which is on elementary lake, which I wanted to say, Mark, what a beautiful lake that is, and how it's magnificent to live there. The canal on the side needs a little help, but that's a beautiful lake. Thank you so much for keeping that going. Anyway, just a couple of things at the chamber. I just want to report that if we finally get our approval, the chamber will be having a carnival on March 21st, and the project across the way, we're waiting for final approval, but we have a program where organizations can sell tickets. They're normally $20, and you can sell tickets early, pre-sale, $17.50 for a pre-sale buyer, and the seller can keep another $2.50. So, if there's any organizations like the Boy Scouts or various people that keep clubs that want to raise some money, it's a nice project because the kids are going to go anyway, so it might be a chance to raise some money. Also, I want to say that we're working with Margate Middle School, for example. They're having a business jamboree in May, and we'll be working with them to help them get that going. My thought was that we should have the schools involved with the chamber, you know, as much as possible because they really want to learn about business, and I think that's going to evolve. Also, Micah is a new, I don't know if you know, but the churches have come together, St. Vincent's is here, but they have a meeting Thursday of different churches are getting together, and I think the chamber and the church should be working together, so I'll be going to that meeting. So, just to keep you up, you know, we're trying to get everybody working together on different stuff, so, thanks.
Commissioner Talarico.
Yes, I'm sorry. Father Joe and Eric, they're involved in that. It's not just churches, though, is it? Are you open to all the religious groups?
Well, the elementary school churches are part of it.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought he said secretary.
I'm open to everybody. Go ahead, Eric.
Good evening. My name is Sidney King. I live at 2111 Northwest 76th Avenue, Margate, and I am, as you can see, president of Margate Lions. Now, I have something to report, a nice one. First of all, Chief, I don't know what you said, but we, you know, we were dumped on again for, we're just beside ourselves, a mess, and Tony came over with the Rangers. Now, I don't know if everybody here knows about the police Rangers. They're wonderful. Tony brought a sergeant and seven young Rangers.
Explorers.
Explorers. They were incredible. They got to work, they brought trucks, they brought everything, and in one, one day, well, half a day, they absolutely cleared, did, it was, it was amazing, and I think it's an absolute credit to Margate and particularly to our chief and the police. And I know everybody sometimes says, oh, the police, this was super, and I think everybody should know about it. Other than that, wonderful. And by the way, the last time we got dumped on, yes, who came along and moved it? The mayor and the vice mayor personally, I don't know who it was, and we take our hats on from the blind children and ourselves. We want to thank you, Chief, thank you very much. That's it. Thank you.
Chief, would you please let the explorers know from the commission that we appreciate their efforts when they're out there and doing those things?
So, my people suit.
Officer Tommy Crescia, let them know that we do appreciate they make us look very good, and we appreciate it.
Rich Bobovick, 606 Six Winterfield Boulevard. I'd like to tell you, this commissioner, that you need to replace the CRA board. Decisions and stuff that they're doing are totally ridiculous. You only have to look out in the hallway there and see the pictures there of these ridiculous buildings that you want to put in here, which have absolutely nothing to do with what the people of Margate really wanted. It has more to do with Metropolitan Metropolitan Planning Organization and the county wanting to put city centers and state boards separate regardless of what citizens want in your city. And let me say, I've come to a lot of commission, CRA meetings from the beginning up, so I've watched a lot of stupid ideas come forward, and maybe all you all weren't here for this, but I remember the first thing that he did, they were having a seminar, and they had people come in from some college, and it was a feel-good thing, and everybody was going to write down how they felt, and we had Ferris wheels, American Airlines being proposed, and all this crazy stuff. And the only thing missing was the Ouija board. Watching the CRA board overspend for property, and it's what, if it's worth half the money they pay for it, I'd be amazed. I don't even think it is, and it's not the beginning. It's very difficult to develop one. So, I see an inordinate amount of bad decisions come from the CRA board since it's been taken over, and it's just totally ridiculous, it's out of control right now, and the plane that's out sitting out on the board has nothing to do, zero, with what the citizens of Margate really is for. As a matter of fact, I was laughing when you came up and asked for a movie theater because there's a one over there. So, what really bothers me about this, though, is I come to these meetings and I've seen this, and Coral Springs is knocking buildings down and redeveloping Coral Springs right now, building a new city hall, knocking out plazas and building new stores. We haven't done anything. We're like stuck in a Twilight Zone. And when I got amazed about the money aspect of how we're going to pay for it, I was told I was negative. I'm negative.
And let me say, I've come to a lot of commission CRA meetings from the beginning up. So I've watched a lot of stupid ideas come forward. And maybe all you all weren't here for this, but I remember the first thing that he did, they were having a seminar and they had people come in from some college and it was a feel-good thing and everybody was going to write down how they felt. And we had Ferris wheels, American rounds being proposed and all this crazy stuff. And the only thing missing was the Ouija board. Watching the CRA board overspend for property and it's what, if it's worth half the money they pay for it, I'd be amazed. I don't even think it is. And it's not the beginning. It's very difficult to develop one. So I see an inordinate amount of bad decisions come from the CRA board since it's been taken over. And it's just totally ridiculous, it's out of control right now. And the plan that's out, sitting out on the board has nothing to do, zero, with what the citizens of Margate really is for. As a matter of fact, I was laughing when you came up and asked for a movie theater because there's a one over there. So what really bothers me about this though is I come to these meetings and I've seen this and I, Coral Springs is knocking buildings down and redeveloping Coral Springs right now. Building a new city hall, knocking out plazas and building new stores. We haven't done anything. We're like stuck in a Twilight Zone. And I got amazed about the money aspect of how we're going to pay for it. I was told I was negative. I'm negative, I'm negative. I've watched this silly stuff going on for years and nothing being done and I'm negative because I don't want to know how you're going to pay for it. Now, anybody who wants to sit there and say that I'm negative, they need to go. They need to resign. It's a legitimate question. And a gentleman that was out in the audience who was talking about the CRA board, he should be put on a board. He actually knew what he was talking about. He made you all look like not too intelligent. That guy was really smart. Replace the CRA board or add some new members, it hasn't fallen here.
What else?
Yes, Rick.
No, it's not the other, I thought it was about the bike that thing.
Is your on the agenda for the gray ones?
Oh, on the agenda, well, this is, I think you mentioned on my.
Did I have it in my hand? Joyce Bryan, 7005 Northwest 17th Street. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I will speak on behalf of our MICA initiative. MICA is M-I-C-A-H, stands for Margate Initiative for Community Action and Hope. For community action and hope. Our organization is a group comprised of local Margate churches, schools, and local community leaders. Our mission and purpose is to help connect our Margate community together through the sharing of resources, support, and most importantly, love. And it was started in November. We had a meeting in January, December, January, and we're coming up to our third meeting. And I'm proud to be a founding member of it, along with these esteemed gentlemen. And the idea for MICA, the word, actually came from Father Joe because he did something similar in Massachusetts. So we just substituted Margate for Massachusetts. Now step aside and come eat back.
Commissioner Tellerito.
Joyce, do you have an extra one of those?
No, but you can have this one.
I'm only going to Commissioner Donahue because they were doing sort of a community program. But Joyce, you, I know, I know if you meant it this way, but you just said churches. We have synagogues that would probably get involved. We've got other religious groups here. So are they, were they invited to this, participate?
We had Eli, Eli that first came with us, he hasn't come back. It's been open and we've been putting it out there, so.
Everybody just sent.
That's correct. So, you know, if anybody else, we reached out to the chamber and other community groups. And Mr. Schroeder, Principal of Margate Elementary, is our recorder or secretary, if you like to call him that. And he's trying to also include some other schools in our, in our group also. So now I'm going to step aside and speak for myself. Two minutes to get started again. Okay, again, I'm Joyce Bryan, Margate. I wanted to thank Commissioner Donahue for just talking about the Margate Diverse Community or Committee. I'm very happy to say that this is something I support. This has been one of my things that I've advocated since I've been running for office here in Margate in 2004. I've always had that as a concern. A diverse community board has always been my concern. So I'm glad to see that it's out there and hopefully we'll get something done. I just want to mention that as a proud African-American woman, if you look at me and my hysteria, that's what you would think. But I have, I say diversity because I just want to bring up some few things about a family that I belong to, my family. Caucasian grandmother, great-grandmother, Caucasian Indian mother. My great-grandmother was half-Indian, my grandmother half-white. I also have in my family, Mexican, Italian-American, my father's marriage to Italian-American, my husband's Jamaican. So, I mean, I could go with a list on and on, Chinese, Belgian, Dutch. So we have a few mixtures just in my immediate family. So I'm just saying this because I just want you to realize when you talk diversity, I not only am half-diverse, I live diverse. So we bring this topic up, just want you to know how diverse some of our Margate residents are. Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Get sent agenda.
All right, now I will read the resolutions. A resolution of the City Commission, the City Market, Florida approving purchase of one girl and a jean camera in an amount not to exceed $6,500 from Ten Eight Fire Department Company utilizing Lake County Contract 12-08060. A resolution of the City Market, Florida approving a run line of understanding and loyalty between Immigration and Customs Enforcement and local county or state law enforcement agency for reimbursement of joint operation expenses from the treasury, a forfeiture fund providing for reimbursement. A resolution of the City of Margate, Florida approving viewpoint of filled the island to the unsafe structure.
What's the wish of the commission?
So moved to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Donahue?
Aye.
Commissioner Donahue?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosanna?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone?
Yes.
Mayor Piri?
Yes.
City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure tonight to present our reports to the commission and to the public. There's been some discussion about the sports complex for many, many months as relation to the scoreboards that were completely not working. And now they have been completely upgraded with new and improved working components that are now operational for use. I know that Commissioner Rosanna was out there last weekend and indicated that they were working very well and very impressed with that. So I greatly appreciate the staff of making that happen. At Firefighters Park, there were some inquiries we had from residents about low illumination to the rear of the park after dust. That was related to residents who were walking in the park and exercising and doing leisure activities. Public Works has finished enhancing the lighting in this area, so hopefully that will be taken care of and we won't have no complaints. As you may know, in front of the city hall, we had some palm trees that were a little too large and we had to relocate those because they were growing up towards the facade. And we relocated those to Winfield Boulevard and 67th Terrace. And we did that in part because we had some complaints in that area about the way it was looking and we're trying to enhance that area somewhat to put those trees there. As it relates to Margate Community College, today we have 22 candidates, 21 residents and one non-resident. It appears at this point in time that that class will commence with April 1st on Tuesday. The multicultural boards and committees, we have completed our preliminary research and we have forwarded that to each of you. And I'm now waiting for any and all direction that you might want to give me regarding that situation after you have a chance to look at it. Of the 12 cities that we polled, right now, four said they have a board or a committee. As it relates to the proposed wall at the water and wastewater plant, I know that all the commissioners went out and walked that area, took a look at it and spoke to Ruddy Chippu, our director. And we believe that we have a potential and acceptable resolution to that matter. We'll be presenting it back to you next week for consideration. Red light cameras, before, last week, I believe that we had talked about a six-month activity comparison report for the year of inception. I sent that out to all of the commissioners. As you're aware, the city wishes to terminate the agreement. The city must give the notice to the vendor, which is ATS, no later than July 31st of 2014. It's the administration's position that no termination cost would be applicable at this date were used. If no termination notice is proposed and are adopted, the agreement can continue for three additional one-year periods. All that information was provided to you, so I'm waiting for some of your thoughts on that issue as well. Also, as it relates to some of our parks, we've talked about a comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I've asked the Purchasing Department to work on an RFP for that proposal. And I'm bringing that, bringing that back to you shortly. I think it's the right way to proceed with regarding to all of our parks across the city, that we do a park improvement plan, look at what the costs are associated with that and bring them up to a level that's acceptable for all of the residents and also for the commission. Project Lean Free, which we started many, many months ago, I'm happy to report, we have processed eight applications. And residents are paying off their existing leads for the city and that seems to be picking up speed. Our recycling program, Recycle Bank, city residents have saved sixteen, about 16,000 in credits in 10 months since that's been operational, so that's been a pretty successful program as well. Previously at city commission meetings, there were some residents and direction was given to staff to look at fencing in front of yards. Economic Development is working on their research and I should have a report to you next week on the status of that. Also, there was a discussion by one resident regarding sheds in yards with the five-foot setback. We're working on that as well, should have that completed in two weeks. Want to let you know that obviously we are working on our finance director position that has closed. We have narrowed the field to about seven candidates. We'll be conducting interviews next week and we will keep you posted on that particular process as well. Also, I had a complaint this past weekend and previously about a food truck that was on the weekend and was over here on the corner of the CRA property and selling food. In the evening hours, we found out who that was. It appears to be a rogue food truck person who decided to set up shop and see what he could come up with. And he was, he was warned that that's a violation of our code and that he can't do that any longer. So we've hopefully taken care of that issue. And also, just as a point of information, as you travel down Northwest 31st Street from Sample Road to State Road 7, that area where we have some new shopping areas, the Met MD is going there and Best Buy and Home Depot. As I, no, Home Depot, Home Goods. As I drive through there, I think that area is looking, in my opinion, not real well, let's put it that way. And I directed Public Works to go out there and start cleaning all the bowl notes, curbing and so forth. I also spoke to the Recreation Department about trying to do some enhancements on the swales to sort of bring that area up to a little bit better par, so it looks better when you come into the city. And finally, it's my personal privilege on behalf of people who worked on this, the city attorney and myself, presenting the mayor with a check for $450,000 from Big League Dreams. There you go. It's in the bank.
All right.
I'm sending it to Pam.
And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. And, and. I want, I want to thank the city attorney and the city manager and everyone that worked on this. I had no doubt we were going to get this money back because the way that the city attorney had the contract written that we had followed absolutely everything that they wanted us to do. So we had absolutely no reason for them not to. I think this is, you know, we, we tried something new, we wanted something new. It didn't come out, it didn't work out. We haven't lost any money on it, so we'll put this back in and we'll think outside the box again because we can do that. We can think outside the box. Commissioner Rosanna.
Sure, I have two questions. Margate Community College, great class, whoever you take and I highly recommend it. But it was missing one thing and it was a commissioner.
Yeah, they don't let us.
Is that what, they don't have the, you know, you need all the directors of all the different staff, but there's no commissioner?
They don't let us. I asked that the first year because I thought they should have a commissioner so we can actually tell them, we don't fix your tickets, we can't fix your, but they wouldn't let us. So I don't know if the new city manager wanted to do it or not, that's up to, I left that up to them because it was their program.
Got you. And one other question. Andrews Field, is that Margate's property?
Yes.
The track two, or how far does it go?
Where is? Or White's, the P-Rac specials.
Is that the huge piece of property?
Well, it is and it isn't, aren't they?
Michael Jones, Parks and Recreation Director. The property itself is owned by school board that we lease.
Oh, okay.
We have an existing lease on it, it's been that way. We maintain that property for our use and primarily is for our youth recreation league.
Got you. How long was it, a year lease or a year?
It's renewed.
Renewed? Okay, thanks. Commissioner, I don't want to, just like I heard your comment about the Margate, it just went over my head. I've never really addressed the issue of a commissioner attending or being a person.
Part of the.
Part of the class or being a presenter?
Being a presenter.
That's interesting. I wouldn't mind seeing that.
First day. My next question, are you going to be up the class?
Of course.
The full class?
Of course.
Class?
Of course.
Okay.
I might not be at all, I might have my assistant there as well. We'll take a look at that, I mean, if, you know, I never thought about that.
I'm sure they would have a lot of questions just to the city commission and be interesting.
Okay, we'll get some more.
He laughed at me. Okay. I just think we all should go out for pizza now, huh?
We could go to Italy and have pizza.
Tell Mr. Popovich. Okay, resolutions.
Number 6A. A resolution of the City of Margate, Florida approving national night out on August 5th, 2014 to promote community involvement, crime prevention and drug prevention activities and awareness strengthening safe neighborhood spirit and police community relations and to encourage neighborhood camaraderie as part of the fight for safer streets. And a cost not to exceed $13,000 provided for funding from a law enforcement trust fund provided to the mayor and city manager to execute event-related services.
What's the wish for the commission?
So moved to approve.
Second. Discussion? Lovely. Call the roll.
Commissioner Tellerito?
Aye.
Commissioner Donahue?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosanna?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone?
Yes.
Mayor Piri?
Aye.
6B. A resolution of the City of Margate, Florida adopting a resident discount admission rate for the City of Margate, so called a facility, providing for rate, providing for date and there needs to be a rate proposed and approved.
There needs to be a dollar figure in here. What's the wish for the commission with a dollar figure?
I would, I'd like to propose a new rate of $4.
Second? Second?
Discussion?
Yes. I'd like to add an amendment for the $2 discount.
Does that make it?
It makes it five dollars.
Do you get a second on that?
Second on that.
Okay.
I would like to see it less than both of your proposals. Now, I have a family of six and for me to go, this costs $30. It is a park. I think the Margate residents should be getting a discount. And people from other cities want to come in and they'll have to pay more. But it is a park that they do pay taxes on from the get-go, so kind of like double charge.
So what do you want?
I would like to take it down to $2, $10 a family.
Do you all have seconds? Okay. My discussion of this is that we still have to pay for salaries, we still have to pay for chemicals, we still have to pay for maintenance. So they're, you know, that gets paid out of it. So we've got $5 and we've got $4, so.
Ask for the roll on the amendment, which is five.
Could I have the roll for the amendment for $5, please?
Commissioner Tellerito?
Aye.
I wish to some.
On the amendment?
I want to say something.
I want to say something, I need to call the public.
On the amendment? On the amendment.
Rich Popovich, 606, Six Winfield Boulevard. Let me say that I noticed that you're, why don't you just let everybody in for free? I mean, it's, I didn't do, let everybody just go in and, there's no cost of nothing, you don't have to worry about that. But let me say to you, I remember when that park was developed, and I'm going to bring you something, because you obviously don't. That was presented as a moneymaker. I used to watch Frank Porcelli sit up there and tell us all the money he ate every week there, that they were making money. He was in $250,000 a year. Give me a break. I mean, you think it's okay to just lose money and do nothing? I mean, what's that all about? You know, lowering the cost down to nothing. I get up by chlorine and pay for anybody there, they're charging nothing, Ernesta nothing. I get up by chlorine and pay for anybody there, they're charging nothing, Ernesta nothing. I mean, we're not a free society, this is, nothing here is free. And if you're not aware of the way this is presented to the citizens, I want to remind you, it was presented as a moneymaker, not to lose money. You're losing $250,000 a year and now you want to charge people even less money. I mean, I know your government and whether it be a sugar daddy.
Mr. Popovich, excuse me.
Am I out of order?
No, but what you're speaking on has not been proposed, nothing fee has not been proposed.
What hasn't been proposed? You want to lower the fee, you want to lower the fee and collect less money.
You're speaking about it being free, are you not?
No, I'm not. I'm talking about, I said it might be free. Don't listen to her, you're not even going to stop doing something smart. The button I'm talking about, lowering the fee down to $2, $4, or $5, when you're not even getting any money, charging what you're charging now, and then the taxpayers are going to have to pay for it. And let me tell you, I bought the car, that was supposed to be another park, there was supposed to be another pool built there, you can't use the basketball courts unless you pay and go in. I mean, there's so much boom dawdle, nobody around here wanted the damn thing and now, now you're just looking to lose more money. Can't you figure that out? I mean, I know you people lose money all the time, I come up here all the time, you hear me say it, losing on housing, losing on this, losing on that, now you're losing on this. I mean, what do you think, taxpayers are, unless you buy money, you just, you know, sugar daddy thing out? And a lot of people go, that close to co-bought even from Margate, because I bought it. They don't want people from Margate, so we're subsidizing everybody else. I don't get it. There, apparently. Yeah. First of all, the outside people aren't getting a discount, the Margate residents are getting a discount, which makes a difference, number one. Number two, it's not been supposed to be a moneymaker. However, we do have to pay the bills to do some things, which is why it cannot be free, which is what you were ranting about. Number two, number three, what past city manager Porcella may or may not have said is irrelevant because we had a past Parks and Rec person who had said that we weren't allowed to give discounts when we tried to do it almost 40 years ago, I believe, that we tried to give a discount and that wasn't accurate information, so it's going to get a discount one way or the other. Commissioner Rosanna.
Richard, you're acting as if parks are supposed to make money. People pay the taxes, enjoy the amenities of the city. Somebody has to take care of the soccer field, somebody has to take care of the baseball, so when people walk on them, we're supposed to charge?
Presented as a moneymaker, I'm sorry.
Obviously, it's not, though.
Okay, so why lose more money?
Maybe the reason why we're losing the money is because people can't afford to go there. Get the people there, maybe we can make money on the concession. It's not making money now, we got to try something.
Mr. Talarico.
Commissioner Talarico. On those lines, I guess we should charge the baseball kids to play on our fields, play on our soccer field, we should charge a fee for that according to your philosophy.
No, that's not my point. Where's my map? That's not Mr. Popovich. It was so worse in my mouth and he shouldn't be permitted to do that.
Mr. Popovich.
I can say what I like.
You can say what you want.
Mr. Popovich, please.
But, proposing...
Commissioner, just don't, don't direct your comments to him, just direct your comments, please.
Okay. Proposing that we, we charge a fee here is acceptable. We can't, we're charging to make up the difference and make up $2 on this. We're trying to lower the fees. However, we don't, we should start charging, if we want to make money out of things, we should start charging kids to play soccer. We should, I'm not talking...
Mr. Popovich.
We pay taxes for everything, okay? We pay, we should, we should charge them to play baseball, whatever, use basketball courts. We can't do that. We're trying to make up, recoup some of our funds here, it's acceptable, we're going to lower the fees a little bit just to try to help out our families and I think it's a good idea to do that.
Okay, vice mayor?
A lot of our residents don't use the pool because of the price. That's a fact. I have heard numerous times from the residents that they will go to the neighboring pools because the cost is less than Margate. My thinking is if we lower it to the $4 and we get two people for every one person that shows up now, we are ahead of what we're making now. The pool is not making any money. Let's try something different. Maybe if the cost is lowered to what the neighboring cities are for our pool, we'll get more people. More people brings in more money. People will also use, more people will also buy the food at the concession stands. So, let's try something. Let's try it for at least, my proposal is to try it for at least six months. If it doesn't work, then we can try something else. But to keep losing money and not do anything for our residents doesn't seem to make sense to me when I know that the residents are going to neighboring pools. If we have a resident who wants to go to our pool and has a child and neighborhood children want to go to the pool, for $7, they won't invite the neighborhood children. For $4, they'll say, "You know what? $4, come along with us."
Commissioner Donahue.
The discussion is on the amendment about $5, I'll keep it to that. By lowering it, I see where the incentive is to, for Margate residents to get a discount and to come in. A $5 bill is not a lot to spend for something. Go to McDonald's and try to get a decent meal for $5. So, $5 is not a lot of money. It is a discount, an incentive for people to come out and try it. And once you try it, you like it, and then you keep coming back, whether it's five or four in the future. Again, if it were five, we'd still have that six-month period to try it out and change it if we choose to. So, since we're talking about the amendment about $5, I think $5 is adequate to test to see if it catches on with the community.
But that is still more money than the neighboring cities. And they'll still go, even though it's $5 and we're lowering it to $5, the neighboring cities are still lower than that. So, there's no attraction to even do it here, they'll still go to the other pools, I feel, personally.
Commissioner Rosanna.
Is there a discount for like a certain age or is it what we said?
Children up to, yeah, three.
I think it's a dollar for kids up to three and then there were, under three, a dollar. And then we have a, you can buy advanced passes for a discount. Okay?
Rick McCarty, 48, 29 South Amity Circle. It feels like in this proposal, there's two issues. One is obviously to get people to come there, so it's a function of how little you can charge to get more people to use the pool. And the other is, is there a, does it have its own P and L, this pool, so, I mean, what is the expense and income, are you losing if you went to five versus four? I mean, will it affect the P and L of this pool? I mean, what is that number? Are we talking about, if we went to five, we lose another $50,000 or another $4? I mean, that's, I don't have the backup, so I didn't know that. I was just asking the effect, it would have financial, does it really matter between four and five? And if it doesn't, then the lower price sounds like it'll get more people and just an opinion. But if it affects bottom line significantly, then you have to reconsider. I just didn't get that side.
Do you want the numbers?
Yes, please.
For the $2 discount, it's $45,000. For the $1 discount, it's $22,000. For the $3 discount, it's $68,000 is the difference. However, again, the residents of Margate pay for the pool and the privilege of the parks in their military, so they are paying for it. Again, we were under the direction that you could not give a Margate resident a discount because we were told incorrect information. But one of the things by going to the pool that we have found is we do have a lot of out-of-towners that come in and there's not much incentive for a Margate person to come in. So, that's where the whole discussion for lowering it. Parks aren't supposed to make money, as they do, that's icing on the cake, but they're not supposed to make money.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talarico.
Just a question, do they ask, ask people for an ID when they come into the facility? But they're clearly a resident.
Well, they will, they would have to, yeah. Yeah, they would have to. They don't, but they would have to.
Scott Yardley, 5948 Winfield Boulevard. I think Commissioner Simone makes some excellent points. If we're losing money, then it only makes sense to adjust your methodology of their all staying. Yeah. Incentives defined as doing the same thing over and over again, expecting to get results. And any business will adjust their prices to see what their best returns are going to be so that it is valid and I think a very wise proposed in that perspective. Also, I think that if we have competitive, like you brought up second point, competitive cities that charge less, then they're going to raise less, then that might be an indicator of why we're losing money. I would like to know what those cities were and also what, how's their attraction, their pool compared to ours, who are pretty nice one. And also in general, I just want to say that I like this proposal. I am personally using budget and get fiscal responsibilities, but on this issue, accessibility to that nice park, residents always pop in me and I like it, really just, I like hearing this. I have nine kids, as you know, and it'd be very expensive for me to go to that park.
Why don't you get a discount for a certain amount of...
Like a bigger dozen, you know?
I think, I think for 10, you get egg roll or something.
So, thank you, hopefully you address those questions about the other cities. I also, I know you're going around with your prices should be here two, three, and five. I really would like to see your testing money to be here competitive price for other states. Thank you.
I'll let you answer him in one second. Commissioner Talarico.
Yeah, I want to withdraw my amendment.
Okay, so we're back to $4.
Right?
Yeah. You went five, so now we're at $4. Wait one second.
Yes, just a second.
Mr. Donahue, you need to draw yours, too?
I withdraw my second.
Okay. Now, you want to give a brief, for your digest version to answer Mr. Yardley's questions?
Yes. Safers Park Pool in Coral Springs charges $3.50 for anybody 18 and over and they also have a water park. Quiet Waters is $5, they have a water park. And Tail Rack Aquatic Center, they are charging $3.75 for adults 13 and over and they also have a water park.
Commissioner Rosanna.
Are there any free, free ones on there?
No.
No?
No.
That's all.
That's also all in the backup, if anybody wants to look on, see it, it's all in the backup with those numbers that staff put together. Thank you, by the way, Mike. Okay, so, we have a first, oh, wait, Joanne, you have to run this out. I said, call the roll.
Call the roll. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Talarico.
I.
Commissioner Donahue.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosanna.
No.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes.
Mayor Pierpino.
Yes, and that's for the $4 and $5.
Can we try it for six months instead of trying it for a full year? Can we make promotions?
What's the season? Like, what's the season? How many months? Six months, it starts March. For how long? How long do we do it for the season?
March through October.
March through October. For the season, okay.
Mike, is that pool heated?
Yes.
Yes.
Full year?
Yes.
Yeah, you can swim for a dollar laps. You can still do that, right, Mike?
Even in the southern time, is the heat running on the pool?
It's on a center.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you give me one that it's like?
Yes. And we will be having adult night hopefully and starting again on Friday nights, which we'll leave at $5 because we're adults, we can pull out $5. We can do movies there too, that's part of the things that we're looking at and doing. But you can swim laps for a dollar an hour over there from 7:00 AM to, I believe, 3:00 or 4:00 PM, which is great.
Do you want to ask the slide there?
Awesome.
It's high compared to other cities, it's high. Is there a reason for that or, I mean, I say it's a reason, I'm sure.
You have to ask Mike about that, I don't know, you know? About the state, the height that they think.
Let me just bring a point of information to you. I don't know that you're really going to get a good indication in one season how your resident rate is going to impact the operation. I don't know if that's a good enough time, just being candid with you.
Well, why don't we just take it down and just, we adjusted it and maybe the next commission that's up here may want to change it next year. We'll just leave it as an open end, it's going to be $4 until the next commission changes it, how's that?
Well, we have to fund this too, remember that. There's a funding mechanism, it's an issue of equity too, when it comes down to preparing our budgets, but I would suggest that we keep this rate through September of 2015.
At $4?
Whichever one you have.
We did the $4.
Keep it, and that gives you two seasons basically to do some comparisons on this and see if you have, having an impact or not.
Anybody have a problem with 2015?
I'll make a motion for a motion.
You had a motion for 2015? May I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rosanna.
I'm talking about the height.
Oh, okay, well, let's, public on 2015. Rich Popovich, 606-6, Winfield Pool Park. Well, it doesn't surprise me, when you have a bad idea, to double down on it. It really doesn't surprise me.
The other thing, we could always, just a point of information, we could always bring it back to you with some, after the first season, some defensive statistics.
Okay. Doesn't matter, as long as we're lowering it and we're giving the residents a discount, I don't really think, you know, it's going to matter if we do it till 2015 or whatever. None of us may be up here after November, so it'll be up to the new commission or whatever time they change it. Commissioner Rosanna, a good question for the city manager, Mike. Actually, we've got to go through Mike, you've got to go through the city manager.
We have to vote on that motion or is it just on your script?
No, you want us to vote?
Yes.
All right, let's wait, let's vote on the 2015 motion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Talarico.
I.
Commissioner Donahue.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosanna.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Rosanna, you have a question for the city manager.
The height requirement, because I know when we go up to, I know the water slides up in Disney with the case, they can go on the slides there. You can go up there, it's fine for you, so.
You won't get a nosebleed.
What I'm saying...
Now that you must fit up there.
What I'm saying is the height requirement, I know a lot of kids go there and they're a little upset because they can't go on the slide and, you know, you go to a neighboring city or another big park and you can go on the slide, I'm just wondering why the...
Height? You want to, you want to rely on this, Mike?
Maybe that's why a lot of the families don't come, because their kids don't want to go on the slide.
Michael Jones, Parks and Recreation Director. The height requirement is set by the state of Florida. We are permitted and inspected every year. 42 inches is the height requirement and 300 pounds is the weight requirement.
Okay. All right. Now, where are we at? Next.
Seven and.
Forgot where we were, okay.
Seven and. Yes, a resolution of the City of Margate, Florida approving a special permit for extended hours of alcohol sales for consumption on premises for year 2013, 2014, from Lewis M. Anaya DBA Centenario Nightclub, 199 South State Road 7.
This is quasi-judicial, so anyone that's going to speak, please rise. Raise your right hand. Deeply, I, I need to get some warning first. Okay, Justin?
Just raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Do I have a motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Which has been approved by the police department? Okay.
Call the roll. Commissioner Taurico?
Aye.
Commissioner Donahue?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosano?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone?
Yes.
Mayor Pierpino?
Yes. Good luck. Eight.
Yes, an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance permitting the code of the city of Market, Florida, image state zoning particles through general provisions, setting a uniformed two-tier shared storage building and temporary storage structures in residential areas, providing for temporary storage containers, funding for appeal, providing for stability, providing for connectivity, providing...
What's the mission of the commission?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Taurico?
Aye.
Commissioner Donahue?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosano?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone?
Yes.
Mayor Pierpino?
Yes.
Item number nine. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, yeah, nine.
Discussion of possible action, presentation by St. Vincent's Men's Guild for service dogs or servicemen golf cart.
Okay, guys, you're up.
Broke it. I broke it.
No, you got to buy it. Oh. That ought to be good for a foursome, isn't it?
I'll take the... Do we have a warrant for this one, Mr.?
I'm sorry. Harry Plackett, 271 Northwest 76th Avenue, Margate, Florida. I'm here on behalf of St. Vincent's Church, and also Micah. It runs into each other. St. Vincent's, as you know, as you know, is very much involved in charities throughout the city of Margate. We do Toys for Tots, a shop with a cop, and we have St. Vincent before, those, the, you know, food. So now we're taking our charity to a different level, okay? We're running a golf course, and April 5th, at Coral Springs Golf Course. We couldn't get the course in Margate, unfortunately. But, and what is for is for service dogs, for servicemen. And I don't know if, maybe you've seen the newspaper here a couple of, about a month ago, where they had an article on this, this year, group of men and women in Fort Lauderdale. I don't know if you've seen it?
We have it in our package.
I'm sorry?
We have it in our package.
Oh, you have it. You have it in your package. Okay, great. Well, we've seen that dog, the dog in action. They brought the dog to the, to the church, and with the handler, and it's incredible. These dogs are rescue dogs from Palm Beach. They're, what do you call it? Greyhounds, right. But what we're asking, we're asking if the city and the police department, the fire department, the maintenance department, they can, they can just talk it up about this tournament, about this tournament. Because I know a lot of young fellows like to play golf, and it couldn't go to a better cause. I mean, so many young people come back with, well, you know. I mean, in my day, they did have the technology and a way to evacuate people. Today, unfortunately, they do, and what happens is they get some very terrible acts, you know, wounds. Anyway, if, if you want to help, we'll take anything. If you want to donate a dollar, $10, whoever you want to donate. But if you want to sponsor a hole, it's $100. And you get a sign like this saying, "This hole sponsored by whoever." Okay? Now, I have, I have all the brochures here, so if the city, if at all possible, we just want everybody that we can go to. I know I spoke to the chamber, and they're all enthused about it. And this is also part of Micah. There's 54 organizations that have been notified about this year, this golf tournament. So, my plea to you is if you can help these veterans, men and women, please do. I mean, you have the packages. Maybe you can spread it out through the city. And we'll take anything we can get, and also if they'd like to play golf. I have the brochures here. If somebody would like to have, take a look at the brochures, I'd be very happy. Thank, thank you very much. Let's step up for them, because they stepped up for us, okay? Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion for the commission to sponsor a foursome.
How much is a foursome?
$95, so, or $500.
$100?
I'm sorry. Yeah, $95, $400.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If you don't mind. I ran into this before, where people want to sponsor foursomes, but who do you give the foursome to? You know, that's the problem.
Oh, no, we sponsor it with, with some, we have teams that, Commissioner Rosano has, usually has people that he plays with, the city manager, Jim from IT.
All right, okay.
So we sponsor somebody in the city for us to, because you don't want...
We'll take it any way we can. All right, thank you.
So did I get a motion?
Yes.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll. Discussion. On us sponsoring a golf...
Yes, it's, uh, clubs.
And we, on us sponsoring a golf?
Yeah, I commend them, but I also have to tell you, you're doing a grand job. The Lions also have a seeing eye dog thing, and we present every year a seeing eye dog, which costs $9,000. It's specially trained, and we give it to a blind person every year. And it's not generally, no, we just do it quietly. But we commend you, and if there's any way the Lions could help you, you donate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rosano.
Yeah, I think last, last time he had something like this, I think, Joey, you picked the foursome?
Yes.
So maybe do something like that, the same thing?
That's what you want to do.
If we have a whole foursome, okay?
Since you're the golfer on the, on the commission, you can pick it if you want.
Okay, I'll sponsor a hole myself. Good luck, guys.
Okay. All right, call the roll.
Commissioner Taurico?
Aye.
Commissioner Donahue?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosano?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone?
Yes.
Mayor Pierpino?
Yes. And we'll talk about sponsoring a hole, but probably each of us, maybe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job.
Give the word out to all the departments.
Yeah.
Back on B?
Uh, yes, B.
Alzheimer's Family Center presents The Spirit of America.
Okay, the reason I have this put on, because the people that are being honored are Mayor Becky Tully from Covey Street. She does a lot with our city. But also her husband, Frank Tully, who's very, very involved in the 1013 Club, as he is in the American Legion. So I put it on here to see if the commission wants to go to this, buy tickets for this, or whatever. So discussion.
Yeah, well, we usually do sponsor something with the all-time. We usually buy tickets.
Yeah, well, that's why... So this is a little different, because it's a, it's a, it's a black tie event. It's a little more formal than...
How much is that ticket?
$175, $150.
$175.
$175. Again, why I put it on here.
Well, I think we could buy some tickets.
You want to buy two tickets?
We can buy a table.
No, my table is outrageous, by the way.
Don't you have the check, Lee?
Yeah, I do.
Have you heard of... Tom was up.
I got that, yeah. Okay, so we got a motion for two tickets. Is there, oh, wait, I'm sorry. Commissioner Taurico, you're on, but are you not? Okay, Vice Mayor Simone.
Is there a second before we discuss?
Oh, was there a second for the two tickets?
Discuss it, whatever you want.
Second then. Okay. Now, Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes, I would prefer to withdraw my name from going, um... I'm going to be unpopular in this, but it's how I feel. I feel that $175 for a commissioner to go to a dinner, I don't feel that that's right to ask the taxpayers to pay for something like that. So I prefer to withdraw from, from going, even though I think, you know...
Been asking, but, discuss. Okay, that's fine. I'll just see. Why I put it on the agenda, guys, because it's, you know... Commissioner Rosano.
Vice Mayor Simone, when I looked at this, I was, you know, in total agreeance with you. But, you know, looking back and seeing that, you know, what was said about Becky's husband and stuff, getting involved with the city of Margate, you know, I think that it is a, you know, a way to pay them back for what they have done. Not buying the whole table, I think that's great, you know, just buying two tickets, I think is, is fine. Same thing with the golf, you know, they're, it's in Margate, so I kind of like feel that when something does come before us with the Margate, the Margate involvement, you know, I don't mind helping them out, so. Well, I'd like to withdraw my name, too, from going also, but I'm, I'm for the two seats.
If it wasn't for a dinner, us going to a dinner, and if they came to us and asked us to make a donation to Alzheimer's, I would not have a problem with that. My problem is that it is for a dinner, and we are going as commissioners to a dinner for $175.
Well, maybe we, the commission doesn't have to go, but maybe we can send a two-hour Alzheimer's, Alzheimer's center, and maybe a couple of events, and she can select maybe a couple there that would like to enjoy this foursome. That's all.
Want to make that amendment?
Sure. I'd like to amend it, that we, we donate the ticket to Alzheimer's, our Margate Alzheimer's Center, and let tickets be dispersed, or dispersed as needed by the director there.
Is there a second?
Second then.
I have a motion, what do you have?
If we buy the tickets, we haven't voted on yet. The amendment is to donate them to the Alzheimer's Family Center to disperse as they feel, as they feel necessary. Commissioner Taurico?
I don't answer.
You're not on?
Uh, I'm not.
Okay. Commissioner Donahue?
I agree with what my colleagues have said. If I choose to go, it's a good cause. I would pay out of my pocket because it is a good cause. But I would not like to have the city pay for my dinner at that price. So I would also withdraw my name, and that's why I said I'd do it.
Hold on, please. Secret information. Okay. The city manager has just slipped me some secret information. There's also the possibility of listing on a tribute page to Mayor Becky Tully and Frank Tully for a price of $25. Do you want to do that instead of buy the tickets, or do you want to do that as well as buy the tickets, or...
What is, what is that? Is there any, is there any, as we combine?
It says, listing on tribute page to Mayor Becky Tully and Frank Tully is $25. They don't really have an ad thing in here.
They don't have an ad book.
Yeah. So you can, I mean, for another $25, you can... You can have the Margate commission, you know, listed on the thing.
Thanks.
Okay. Oh, wait a minute. Sorry. Commissioner Taurico?
Yes, just a question. You're talking about, in addition to that, do you have a listing, you're saying?
I don't know, because I didn't get in motion or anything. I just got the information slipped to me, so I don't know what the city manager wants.
I just happened to read that on that doc, the documentation in the backup, and I thought it would bring it to your attention, that if, if the fact of the matter is that the city of Margate supports the Alzheimer's Family Center, and as a tribute page, you might be able to, on behalf of all of the residents, you might be able to do that, kind of a support notification. Maybe that's the only approach to this. Whether or not you buy tickets or you don't, that's all.
Yeah, just, just a little slight footnote here. In the past, if I recall, we have purchased tickets for their luncheon.
Right, which is a lot cheaper.
Where we actually bought a table, if I'm not mistaken, where staff went and Commissioners, I don't, I wasn't with Peter, I don't wait for that. But we, I don't think we, I'm picking back now, so, that we never did buy anything for these, for this event. I know, so maybe we could, instead of doing the tickets, we still give them money for, in the fall, I mean, in October, their luncheon is. We'll do a tribute.
All right, how about, are you going to withdraw your motion?
Withdraw the motion.
Tommy, you going to withdraw your amendment, affirmative?
Yes.
Okay. How about we entertain a motion to do the tribute page for $25, and it'd be from the city commission and the Margate residents to Becky Tully and Frank Tully, and we'll buy, ask the $175 dinner. There's no primer that's worth it.
So move.
Uh, discussion. Now, we're on $25 now, not $175.
Scott Yardley, 5948 Winfield Boulevard. A question.
There you go.
Last, this one?
Yes.
Couple Sundays ago, I was approached by a church who were raising money for a mission tour hall. And they're doing so by sponsoring activity. Now, I really wasn't interested in activity whatsoever, so just give me money. I believe what they were doing is good cause, but why do I have to attend an activity for the function they're using to raise it? Their goal is to raise money, not to, they're willing to work for it, but far as I'm concerned, I'm sold on the cause. So I don't think it's a lot of issue. Do we really have to sell them a grid by a ticket or buy this to that or not? And what I'm saying, I don't think it's an issue, that's all. Maybe you resolve that and...
Yeah, we were on the block about three times, and we got back to $25 for the, just the recognition.
Well, if you're going to, we're going to buy two tickets, $175, I'm, I'm, that's okay with me. Not that I have any word, per se, but I'm not really questioning the amount. And I know I believe that Joanne and her fellow steward, that it doesn't look right for going down a commissioner. But it is right to fund all, like, all, I think I was that word.
All tenants.
Yeah, that cause. So you could still put the fund that cause at that amount, you don't necessarily have to attend it. You don't even, you didn't, you didn't have necessary cost to attend it. Those tickets you create up for someone else to raise some more money. You're definitely helping them. So, that's all. Thank you.
And I think Commissioner Taurico said we, we do donate to them for their luncheons and things like that. This one is, I don't ever remember this coming before in the past. I just put it on because I wanted the discussion.
Scott Yardley, 5948 Winfield Boulevard. Just a comment that I, I, having been on the other side of this, you guys are celebrities, you know. You may not know it, but showing up at a event like this is going to be a fun, and I don't think it's something to be embarrassed about. I think you show up, a thing like that is really enhancing the benefit of whatever they're doing, so. Just a difference, thank you.
Just that paparazzi just drives us nuts.
Okay.
Popovich here, 6066 Winfield Boulevard. And let me say, I'm holding an organization, State Business Capital Management Club, along with Frank Taurico, and I could bring you all the pictures that we, of us presenting by $5 checks to Jack and Leslie Dovin, when they were running the Alzheimer's Center. So I'm very familiar with that. And personally, I think that I agree with it, and reason, just to give them a donation, because I know how these dudes go. They're just PR things where everybody goes around and puffs themselves up and says how wonderful they all are for donating everybody else's money. If you're doing your own, I wouldn't have the problem, guy. But I can honestly say, then when we used to give the money away, we used to raise it and give it away, because that's the way you're supposed to do it.
All right, that being said, I get a little confused here. Does anybody want to change it, to making a, just a cash donation as well as the $25? Or are we saving that to the luncheon? Thank you. Okay, so, just what we have is a $25 tribute page from the Margate City Commission, residents and employees, or you guys, or the hell you want. And call the roll.
Commissioner Taurico?
Aye.
Commissioner Donahue?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosano?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone? Vice Mayor Simone?
Yes.
Mayor Pierpitt.
Yes. And that is, that is, that's what we're going to do again.